We're live, thank you. Good evening residents. Have we got any apologies for this evening's meeting?
I have councillor Young, councillor Driver, councillor Hudson and councillor Dark.
Thank you. Any declarations of interest? Right, okay. And now we need to look at the minutes of the previous meeting.
I'll propose the minutes as they are, Chair.
Thank you, second them. Thank you, Tricia. So that's... Everybody, right, do we have a vote all night? Does everyone approve of the minutes?
Agreed.
It looks like it's unanimous.
Oh, you weren't here.
I wasn't here last time, so I can't vote.
That's all right. Well, I didn't actually, I couldn't actually.
Thank you, so that's the approved. Thanks very much. And now we are going to talk about the highways improvement plan. So it's over to you, I think.
Thank you, Chair. As detailed in the town clerk's report, due to the size of Ramsgate, Kent County Council has now agreed that to let each of the seven wards have its own hip improvement plan. Existing hip has now been broken down by ward. There's a different tab on the hip spreadsheet for each ward. Dean will put it up on the screen for us, so you can see it, because it's quite difficult to print, it's too small to print. There are currently only four tabs plus a master document, because there's nothing currently used for Northwood, Newington and Pegwell wards. Ward councillors for these areas can consider if there's anything that they wish to add.
Has everyone looked at these documents? And do the councillors from the areas where there's nothing on them want to add anything?
I'd have a look at this.
Yeah. What do they need to submit it to you?
To the town clerk, maybe.
Been a while, Chair. I suggest that you... You would just suggest that...
Yes, yeah, that would be helpful. I mean, anybody else got anything to say here?
I mean, I did a whole one. We do need to go round and to review, because some things Paul Vallack has actually actioned, which is real evidence that a ward...
A ward walk.
An award walk makes a massive difference. There's three or four things he's put into place already. But we do need to go round, and I noticed there's some signs that have been... There's some no-through roads that didn't have signs on, but that's been done as well, because people are going down those roads again, so. I will cross-check to see whether the priorities that mainly the residents come up, we could just save crossing places, are the priorities on here. So I think our priority would be safe crossing places.
Yeah, I'd just like to say something, because actually, Newington, I did submit in relation to Newington School, so I'll send that to Laura again. Because it's a very dangerous situation outside the school. Yeah.
It's a really good thing to do, actually.
Yes, it is, yeah. It's very helpful identifying these individual bad spots. Right, so if everyone could submit any additional stuff to Laura?
Or myself.
Yeah, or, sorry.
No, it's entirely up to you, ready to go.
Am I sorry, Ellen?
Just make a comment, I'm just noticing that because of the boundaries between East Cliff and Central Harbour, that some of the ones that are under Central Harbour are actually on our boundary.
Right.
Act on both, I don't know how that wants to be recorded, but the references to the High Street and Harbour Street, at least, are joint.
Yeah. Thank you, Helen, that's very relevant, sorry.
I mean, it sounds obvious that we all have boundaries on our wards where the go straight down the middle, so do we need on the main document a differentiation by a ward? Because surely it's the priority, if there's a priority on Harbour Street, it's a priority on Harbour Street, it doesn't matter whether it came from the left-hand side or the right-hand side.
That's true.
The key thing is that a priority's been identified. So we might need to copy on to...
Councillor Mackinson, you've been...
I don't know whether we've reached this yet, but there's a zebra crossing to do with the school.
Yeah.
They're saying it should be across Chatham Street. And it shouldn't.
It seems like it.
Next item.
Yeah.
So we just hang on for that one.
So members, what you have got there are several tabs. One is the master tab that includes everything, and then you've got, yeah, thanks Dean, which gives you everything. And then you've got the four for the wards that have got things submitted, so obviously you have seven tabs if more things come through. So whether you would need to create other tabs, I don't know, it might be over-tabbed.
True, it would strike me that we're going to separate them out. The most sensible thing to do would just to have conversations with our colleagues in neighbouring wards and duplicate, so that the same thing appears on both.
Seems very... Do we count the rule?
Yeah, thank you, Chair. I take on what councillor Wing said about, you know, it's Harbour Street and it should be just been Harbour Street, I understand that, I understand it. But this is to do with wards, so, you know, if we're dealing with wards, then we've got to keep dealing with wards and not just changing it, whatever. I don't want to be pedantic about it, but it just seems to me that whether it's on the border, we should just say it's a border, but it's two wards.
It's two wards, so two wards.
That's all we need to say.
I'm just talking about the main documents.
The main.
The main document shouldn't be separated.
I'm just saying, I'm just, I'm just saying. Yeah, I agree, I'm not, but I want to...
It's just for the tabs, but yeah, do that. Councillor Nick, sorry, councillor Nicksey.
That's the fact, that's what's been saying, it's separated in the documents, because it's no longer one document. No rights of thinking that, we're now doing seven different documents.
So we don't have an overarching plan, so?
No, so that's what I'm saying, it should be...
It's all separate.
It's done in wards. It's too big, because they deal with small parishes and things like that, so they have granted us, which we're quite fortunate in the sense that we now have our own ability for our wards to put in a HRP. So let's not worry about whether it's duplicate or what, let's just put it in there, you know.
Yeah.
That's a good point, thank you.
I sort of understand that, but I mean, I'm playing devil's advocate in my own ward, because, you know, I think safe crossing points are important in all our wards. I would say that there might be a priority for us, your priority might be greater than our priority in our ward, so there must be some way of us merging to create the overall priorities, because we can't, we're not going to get safe crossing points in every ward, are we?
Councillor Nicksey.
KCC have just said no to that. I mean, when we had the original one, and we said, this is Ramsgate and this is difficult to prioritise, but you know, these are the main things if we thought about them, they don't, they don't look at hips like that. So in the, in the teams meeting that we had online, they were very much a case of like, they've got to be small, bite-sized, achievable goals, and most places that do that, because they don't do towns, they do smaller areas. And so therefore villages, you know, but so they said, right, well, in that case, let's pretend you are all individual areas, and then we can tackle that as we go. So they've taken it out of our hands that way, but also, I think, to our advantage, because then we've got seven bites of the cherry, and yet we keep going on about it. As a town council, absolutely, we'll keep going at them, because the town obviously has priorities.
Yeah. Okay, any further...
No, no, but all right, the money, Kent County Council's going bust. So where's the budget coming for all these things? Where's priorities, where's timeline? There is one.
Account to the Greens.
The council has a budget.
The what?
The council has a budget.
What, the council?
No.
But this is driven by Kent County Council, so most of the funding will be from KCC, won't it?
Very likely, because of KCC nowadays. The council, Irish council. This council has a budget, has a reserve fund, but it puts money in, Chair, for dealing with this issue.
So that would cover everything that's on these.
No, no, by the way. You may be able to get money from your KCC councillor, if you have a possible source.
Thank you. Councillor Mackinson.
Well, again, that's been cut, certainly.
Thanks. If you finish, councillor Wing, yeah, yeah.
I thought councillor Wing, KCC's fees have volunteered to do the design, or whatever the layout and cost, one scheme. I don't know if that's one scheme, well, it certainly wasn't one scheme in every ward. It was one scheme a year, but we paid for it, which, that's my understanding of the...
So there'd be one scheme somewhere around, so.
I don't know, that's poor, because this ward thing came later. If they design it and cost it, we can then decide.
Councillor Wing.
I mean, going, doing the hip, it became apparent that there are three levels at which interactions can happen, and I know that Paul Vallack has already actioned some of the smaller things which are part of their routine issues, road signs is one of them. I also know that the rest of Western Road is going to be done, and the roundabout is going to be done, and I think our meeting and the hip has nudged in a bit. But, I mean, the biggest thing for me was pedestrian safety, and on top of crossings, the other thing that is massively impacting on pedestrian safety is access to the pavements. So it's TDC's parking strategy, which you called years ago, which really needs moving forward, and they really do need to engage with local residents, because I think there's a whole combination of looking at residents' parking schemes, reducing the parking to encourage people off of the street. That was the biggest problem for people, for people with mobility problems, parents with kids, and, you know, just people who need a bit more space, basically. There are, there's so many streets that people just can't access.
Yeah. On the floor. Councillor Green, you want...
Safety issues have a different KCC budget.
Right.
I know, what I'm saying is, the hip is a tool to action, not just KCC, but also TDC, and in a sense, us as well. So that, the value for the hip with me was looking at a holistic approach to our highways, and our highways have got to include pavements, and we are getting to a point where there is a crisis situation around people being able to just use pavements.
I just wanted to follow on from councillor Wing's comment, the parking strategy, just to confirm that the tender has gone out and closed on Friday, and I don't know how many, but they do have expressions, plural, of interest, and things are looking hopeful, as hopefully as they can be, that it will actually happen. I read some of it, but I'm actually thinking... But just to confirm that the tender has gone out, and it closed on Friday, and there are expressions of interest.
That's awesome.
Just register my disgust, but no, TDC's councillors, as far as we're aware, have had any involvement with it, because it's appalling, it's back to the old days.
All right, well, thank you for that, I think we need to just clarify something for you.
Reading town clerk's report, on the second page, it says progressively above project which is what we're going to discuss in a minute, would potentially be the one project the KCC will support for the Central Harbour ward this year. So it's not just, it's not Ramsgate, it's that ward. Just to be clear, that we are talking about seven hicks.
Yes.
One thing per year.
Yeah.
However, our funds are limited. So, members, you've agreed that ward members will come through to myself or the town clerks, especially those who haven't got the tabs up there, and you're going to recruit yours.
Yes, thank you.
Councillor Green, you proposed that, didn't you? Can I get a second to fill out your vote on it?
Tricia? Thank you. Could we have a vote on that, please?
That's the first part.
Right, okay. Thank you, now we talk about the...
So...
All right.
No, it's okay, it's fine. Within the town clerk's report, there is an issue at Chatham and Clarendon crossings involving, obviously, the schoolchildren. At the committee meeting on 5th of July, members considered an appeal from the parents of a Chatham and Clarendon Grammar School pupil who had been involved in a serious collision with a vehicle outside the school, I think we're all aware of this. KCC have been approached, and it's estimated that a cost for a zebra crossing for that area, they start at £21,000 per crossing. The school have pledged £5,000 towards the crossings, and the parents of the child that was involved in the accident are planning to do some fundraising as well themselves, and they're asking if Ramsgate Town Council would make a financial contribution. Currently, within the hip budget, you have £30,000, which is £15,000 from this year and £15 from last year. And town clerk has asked, recommendation, will funds be allocated for the proposed crossing outside Chatham and Clarendon Grammar Schools? Thank you.
We have a discussion on that, please.
Yeah, I'm going to be pedantic again. The recommendations are not recommendations, they're actually questions. There's no recommendations, they're questions. So, but, we'll take them as, not questions, as a recommendation, so, you know, we're being asked questions, there's question marks at the end of them. And I would fully support Ramsgate Town Council in putting some money forward for this crossing. I think it shows our support of our residents and that it's needed.
Right, you wanted to speak.
The town suggests that it should be in Chatham Street. Being right on that corner and seeing these kids cross every day, they, if they're coming down from the station, which loads them deep, there is a narrow pavement up there where they can cross. So the traffic, the pedestrian traffic, is either along Chapel Place and across the High Street, or up the High Street from the sixth form centre in Havisham Street. So the crossing would be completely useless in Chatham Street, it needs to be across the High Street. And I know that they have problems with junctions and where they put crossings, but I don't know enough about it to, and I know I've said this before, and it's probably irrelevant now, it ought to be a pelican crossing, not a zebra crossing, because of the speed that the cars travel up there. It is, the, Mrs Sunshine in the wooden box gallery has been to see me to complain about, like it's my thing, about the speed of the cars, and the new lady in Silk Road doing upholstery has been to see me about the speed of the cars up there.
Yes, in that, with the bridge trailers.
Yeah.
Speed was one of them.
Suddenly, you see the road opens up, so they get their foot down.
Yeah.
And...
So we're happy as we saw.
Yes. But I have a feeling pelican crossing is probably out the window.
Okay, thank you, Pat, for that. David, you wanted to say something? Sorry, did you finish, Pat?
I finished, yeah.
I think the location can be, can be sourced afterwards. If it's a pelican crossing, this would have cost at least half as much again. But I would like to suggest this council matches the contribution from the school.
I will second that, Chair.
Sorry, you wanted to speak?
I did, Chair, yeah, if councillor Green's finished, I would second that anyway. You know, surely any of this about a crossing, KCC are the ones who decide at the end of the day whether it's suitable to be wherever the location is, and the best advantage for the schoolchildren to be able to get the school safe, safely. So I think all we can do at the moment is just to support, hopefully, support this motion from councillor Green, that we put the same money to it as the school, and we go forward from there. Thank you.
I know it's my ward, and I do actually drive up there five mornings a week now, as the kids are piling out of the station, and I, there's so many kids that you automatically slow down, because they're just all over the place, and I don't understand what you're saying either, that that is the pressure point, because for me, the pressure point is elsewhere. But, I don't know, I'd better look tomorrow when I go through and see where it is, because I've not seen any kids, I've not been near any kids that have, I've ever put them at risk and I'd go very slowly, or they've, because they're kids, they're not concentrating, some of them, that's part of the problem, so I think there's some education at school to be done. But also, it's my ward, so I should be pleased about this, but I just worry, because there was similar, a similar request or initially request from the parent of the school at Ramsgate, Art School in Newington, that road's had a number of serious accidents.
People green with them.
And the parent actually lives in Central Harbour, but their kid goes there, so I did refer them to the Newington ward councillors. So, I mean, we could find ourselves rightly or wrongly, and I hope we would support all of the requests, because it is about keeping people safe, having to fund more crossings, or at least partly fund more crossings. If I remember rightly, that parent was talking about fundraising as well.
Yeah, thank you.
Sorry, Pat, you wanted to say something else.
The art school is just a primary school.
Yes.
Yeah. They should have a lollipop person.
They do.
They do, which mitigates the risk, and I imagine most kids come to primary school with an adult, but the secondary school, they just pile across the road without looking, and the cars are swerving and screeching brakes.
But it's some education at school, they're missing really.
It is, but you've been a teacher, I've been a teacher. Group of kids out, they take no notice whatsoever, and they just follow the lead. No notice of their surroundings.
I think we have to, I'm actually sorry, Rashawn, you wanted to speak.
Yeah, I just wanted to say that, you know, I've been living in Harbour Street for like 35 years, and my brother went to that school, my son went to that school. It's difficult to really say that where actually the crossing will be, so I think KCC is the best people to decide. I think I agree with Pat, that, you know, the children are actually coming from the Cavernness Street, Clendon Garden, you know, they're crossing that way, and the children coming from the station and High Street, so that's the junction, isn't it? I know, in the morning, and that accident happened about 25 years ago, some, one of the parents, parents actually, you know, something happened there, and then again, it happened again this last year. So it's happened, so I don't know, I am a bit confused where the crossing exactly should take place, but there should be a crossing.
Okay, thank you, Rashawn. Well, that's, oh, sorry, Tricia.
Yes, the single part preparation KCC do, is to look at flows.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
And so that's part of their...
I'd hope so, yeah.
They will decide.
We'll go where other beach points, et cetera.
Yes.
We need to be advised, why don't we? Don't we?
Okay, we'll look. Sorry.
Does this mean we won't be able to put crossings in other places? And is the risk at this crossing greater than the risk at other places?
You can't say, you can't tell that, you can't tell that, you know.
Yes, that's the one ward's done. Yeah.
Okay, is there any further discussion on this?
Sorry, Pat.
I was just going to say, I, I don't, our KCC councillors do something about this. Trevor Shank, who can talk the talk, claimed they did something for the, it's probably that chicane up Chatham Street, and Karen Constance, she hadn't got enough money in her councillor allowance to do it, which was not the question I was asking, but anyway, I just thought I'd throw that in. We've got no support.
Thank you. I need more clarification, sorry, I'm being thick. So that means we won't be, we won't be able to have another pedestrian crossing everywhere else in Central Harbour?
Is I understanding that there's the one?
Not tomorrow.
No.
But what I'm saying is...
It's on Tuesday, right?
Right, so we still have, we still have problems at Jacob's Ladder.
Yeah, but that's not, but that's not fair, guys.
Okay.
But I know, but that's...
Yes, it's one per year.
It's one thing per year, one priority per year that the KCC will be doing.
David, you could... Oh, one per ward, yes. Your proposal. Would you like to state it again?
My proposal is that this council matches the school's...
Right. And who will second that? Thank you. And can we vote on that, please? That seems to be passed. Thank you. Pat, you abstained.
I will abstain, because it's not going to cost anywhere, £10,000.
The crowd fund.
The crowd fund. Yes, I know. That's from the crowd fund, and the costs will have gone up more.
I don't think we could, if you, if KCC council...
Come on, move on.
Nobody for person.
They could, they could protect. Yeah, like, you don't know, some, the girl... We could encourage the parents to do that.
Yes, all right, then that would be a good idea, if we encourage the parents to do that, because they just came up at a previous meeting, didn't they? Okay, so now we're moving on to the neighbourhood plan.
Thank you, Chair. Dean, can you get the neighbourhood plan up? So, members, you've received the following documentation, Ramsgate Neighbourhood Plan Screening Regulation 14 Consultation Notes, the author is Mr Chepwin of Urban Vision, and also the Ramsgate Screening Neighbourhood Plan Version 3.8, dated March 2023, that's a 70-page document, roughly, so it's probably better on the screen for you. Members are asked to consider whether the neighbourhood plan is ready for submission to Thunick District Council, and to consider whether a full strategic environmental assessment or habitat regulations assessment is required.
Okay, can we open up the discussion? Pat and David.
I think we just have to do it now.
Hang on, let's just calm down, we have this discussion, it's okay, Pat, I just take a moment. David, you wanted to say something?
And I put my hand up, and I was going to say this, but maybe you can just fudge this.
Hang on.
I agree, could we set a review date, so we know we can do reviews?
I have no idea whether those two things are...
Absolutely, that's what we've told, so we'll see.
I did ask Steve.
So do we need to do that first?
Um, not necessarily.
They'll send it back, could do better.
Yeah.
I don't think that's helpful at the moment.
Chair, I think if we, in my view, we should, we should go with this, we should give it to full council here, and then for full council to recommend that it goes to Thunick District Council. We will then get feedback from RT, from TDC, as to see whether or not an able plan, it's going to come back with alterations and God knows what else, so, but I think then we can have, we will know exactly what we're looking at.
A long time coming.
Yeah.
Councillor Nicksey, then councillor Austin.
Just, I mean, again, the versions and the boards have just handed theirs into TDC, haven't we? We voted, it's TDC council's votes, but now it's being returned back to them, and so, you know, there's no reason for us not to, of course, there's going to be things that need to change, but again, if the... It's the answer, yeah.
Thank you. Councillor Austin?
Can I just ask that, sending back to Dave Chepwin, being version that the town officer that we just got some of my...
Yes, let's do your part, yeah.
I wish we could cross all your ones, yeah.
Thank you. So that Dave sees that and make sure that he's happy with it, and that there's nothing that he thinks is a problem.
Yeah.
Yeah, thank you. David, you wanted to say something?
Looking at what TDC do with the plans they receive from virtue towers, is they send them out to an expert, and then the expert looks as whether they comply with the regulations or not, and that's what comes back.
Okay, right.
Goes forward to full council here, in related, with regard to the current content.
Okay, could I get a second for that one, please? I think everyone's probably that late, isn't it? Pat, yeah, desperate to get this through, yeah. Thank you, Pat. And could we, sorry, David. Well, that's helped, thank you. I do.
Actually, we're dead now.
Right, could we take a vote on that, please? Does everyone, um could everyone vote on this about, like, do they approve of us sending this? Yes, that seems, yes, universal and unanimous.
Yeah.
I thought that was going to be a longer discussion, actually. Well, we both thought it's going to be a longer discussion. Right, and now we're on to the planning application.
We're with that.
Yes. Right, yes, I'm going to read out the planning applications, which are the next part of the meeting.
So your first application is for twenty three Honeysuckle Road. And this is a tree application. Um wait for this to load. Uh councillor Wing, you called this in. Concerns for loss of biodiversity in an area with an already poor tree percentage and the need to mitigate any loss was your comment. Thank you.
Do you want to speak to this councillor Wing?
Oh, I think it's obvious, isn't it? We have one of the worst tree coverages in the country. We're designated alongside dodgemess, so every tree should be, we should attempt to preserve every tree and try and mitigate, even if they're just recommendations to residents. You know, I don't think residents, well, I'm sure they are blatantly aware of how few trees we have. But, you know, we can't make a resident place a tree, but we could make a polite request and see what happens.
Councillor Orban.
In real life, to because there will be trees that are worth peeping, but worthy of replacement and size of the replacement that that we should be, that we should be looking at. I don't know in this case, I've not, I must admit. Um I don't know the trees in relation to this. Have we got a picture of the trees? Okay.
Do you know how many trees exactly? Count, make this on there.
Well, you've got one, two, three, four.
I I would say I don't want to do down trees, but it's, there are lots of trees there, because it's next to Mount Joey Woodland. And and other sort of random little bits of woodland around there as well. But a lot of the residents have trouble with some of the trees, not a lot, some of the residents have trouble with some of the trees. So I'll just show that.
Right, councillor Orban.
Yeah, could I ask, who who's the applicant?
I wasn't quite sure of the plans because it said all trees marked with an X are coming down.
Hmm.
But there's no trees marked with an X. And but it just, so there there's a bit of inconsistency in the in the plan, the rest are going to be pollarded to three point five metres, which is, that's what these have in place.
I think this is the tree site.
It's all in one property. Oh, we're looking at the first and it's so nice, but
Road up on the lane that goes up from
Yeah.
Roots have been pollarded on that page.
Right.
Nothing left of them.
Well, it's done every few years and they come back. And he waited till the nests were finished with. And people were complaining that their roofs had been damaged by the trees. And I saw the evidence of it.
I mean, you've got many sycamores in the area that are self-set, have gone out of control.
Yeah.
Members will be
Sorry, members, all trees are sycamore in the area G zero one. And they've also got sycamores in the area G zero two within the plan, except for T two, which is lime and tea tree.
Lime and elderberry, which are
A lot of sycamore.
Do we know, sorry, not to face, however, they've got the preservation orders on?
Yeah, that's got T P R on the app.
Right, what are people's thoughts?
Well, I'm sorry, Chair, unless we've got the the reasons as to why these trees should be felled, some felled. Uh some pollarded, I normally haven't got a problem with pollarding because it it helps the tree in due course. Um and so it's it's the felling of the trees and what's the reason for the felling of the trees?
It's, one of them was in in an unstable bank.
Right.
It's one of the ones they want to, isn't it? One of the ones that's
Yeah, definitely, the one to take down that that we need to
If if we go back, because you're seeing on the bigger screen, it's very helpful. So if we go back to the what you've just read, Eileen, and the diagram. I don't really see how many trees are taken out. So if we go, so if you look at the area G O one, so if we go up to the area, they're all being felled to the ground. So area G O one is there. Exactly how many trees are going to be felled in that area, it's in that area, they're all going to be taken out.
Yeah, because it doesn't say.
No, we don't know how many trees, this is why the 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 application is quite weird.
Yeah. Yeah, I I a bit concerned about this because we don't know
Yes.
how many trees are coming out. And I I would propose that, uh we go back to Thannick District Council for more information. We want to know how many trees and what and the reason why these trees want to be felled.
It looks like G O one's being cleared.
Yeah, yeah.
Good solution, yes. So is that what you're proposing? Yeah, who seconds that? Yeah, Tricia. And can we vote on that? Yeah.
Basically, we go back and inquire as to
Thank you very much.
Because what we what we'll do is we'll go back and and we'll see what we can find.
And show you.
And potentially come back and we may not be able to start your
Yeah, that's fine, that's fine. Okay, that's great.
Thank you, Eileen.
Thank you.
Right, oh, sorry, I'm reading.
So, uh, application two is forty eight Royal Road, replacement of timber sash windows with U P V C vertical sliding windows to front elevation. It's in the conservation area. Councillor Austin, you've called this in. Impact on the heritage of the surrounding properties in a conservation zone, not enough detail concerning the type of U P V C window. Replacement appears to be only to the upper floors, so would spoil the look of the building as a whole. Thank you.
This is the old town hotel building.
Flats, ah.
Lovely. So I'd like to see why
But again, we're we're faced with lack of information. We don't, we don't have uh an uh projected elevation of what it's like when it's done. We don't have, we have that that diagram.
We don't have the detail of what those windows will look like. And again, I I would like us
more detail Yeah. before we can take a view. I don't think we can take a view based on the information that we have. There's not councillor Green, councillor
Only a single property wouldn't require permission. This is misty.
It's flat, it's not that.
But this is, that's why it's made, it's permission. Um and I I, in the absence of a policy for the conservation area, which was asked for a number of times now. Um I think we just get to oppose it.
Okay, councillor Orban, you wanted to say?
Yeah, I would, it it's in relation to more information, Chair, and I think, um, there are very
Very good.
Um replications of heritage windows. Um, you know, which may suit the building. I'm actually in a conservation area and we're looking at that, but, um but, you know, I personally, I'd like more more information, but, um
Seems anybody else got anything to say on this?
I mean, I just, the fact that only half of the building is going to be done as well, just to make it stand out like a sore thumb. So we definitely need more information. I I agree with councillor Green, while we continue to not have a heritage policy on this much thing. Although I do support the the, I do support the introduction of heritage style U P V C houses in conservation areas, because this is a rented property which, uh, is vital for single people and couples. Uh where fuel bills would be massive because the windows are terrible. So it it's, we need to really impress upon T P C that they need some sort of action. Then we've got control over what happens.
Yeah, thank you. Yeah, thank you, councillor.
Yeah, I I slightly disagree in that um the government is currently looking at for both for listed buildings and for conservation areas uh to ensure that these larger, older properties are, um to make them more warmer
Yes.
for the winter. And I think that's something that we have to take into consideration. But, you know, the thing about getting getting the heritage thing for an agreement, I mean, that's a separate thing that we that perhaps we should say from Ramsgate Town Council, this is what we want for Ramsgate and for them to do it, but we've got to deal with this
Yes.
in its in its, uh in entirety. So, um personally, I would like to see more more information on it, but if if councillor Green is putting that as a, his proposal, I don't know whether you'd be doing that, David.
Just wanted councillor Austin, you wanted to say something? Okay, fine. What you
I'm not going to propose.
Sorry.
I'm not going to make it.
Okay.
Okay.
I, I think that we need greater clarification on the style and type of U P V, of 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 U P V C window.
Yeah.
Is that what you call a window? Is it a
Yeah, put in the window, yeah, put in the window, but
And does then
It's got to be a heritage design, it's got to be what's there, blah, blah.
Yeah, we support making this building warmer, et cetera. I'd like to second that, thank you. And could we vote on this, please? About, yes, okay. But I'm also wanting, David, what, do you want us to write to T D C and ask them for clarity about this?
Oh, yes.
Okay, yeah. Yes, it seems something that we need to emphasise.
Other than councillors, they don't like things to make buildings warmer, but if they stick with certain star guidelines, we don't have that clarity.
No.
And is, should I propose that, David? I second that.
Chair, sorry, it's not what we're here for in relation, we're here in relation to the to the particular application.
Yeah.
We we deal with that.
But it's
If we go with this, we can highlight it, we can highlight that through to the town clerk, and then we can sort something out.
That's what I'm thinking, Jim, we've, but it's been highlighted and I think we need to reiterate this. Yeah.
I'll speak to it.
Okay. Yes, fine, very happy to move on.
Um, application three is twenty Spencer Square. It's, um, a tree application in the conservation area.
Yeah.
It's, uh, one holly and it's to be felled. Called in by councillors Austin and Wing. Reason for calling, the tree removal in Spencer Square is in a conservation area and we want to preserve as many of our trees as possible. Concerns for loss of biodiversity in an area with an already poor tree percentage and the need to mitigate any loss. Thank you.
Becky, can you take this one?
Yeah, it's it's twenty Spencer Square. As I said, there's very few, actually, there's very, very few trees in that area that, um, you know, on and again, I would like to think we could, you know, I can't stop a tree, somebody cutting the tree down, quite clearly, I understand. And sometimes a tree does need to come down, but I would like to think we could try and encourage people to mitigate mitigate the felling. Holly trees are particularly
Thank you, councillor Austin, then councillor Nicksey.
Is this in the rear garden or?
It looks like it, from that position.
And they given a reason why they want to?
Sorry?
Rational reason why is bringing the building down?
Oh, they haven't given a reason.
We don't, don't have that, we don't have a reason.
Just going to have a quick look at the
Yeah. We could just
It's either got to have an effect on the building structure
Yeah.
underground with the drains or something like that nature that it is. Whether it's the right tree or the wrong tree in the wrong location.
Yeah.
You know, which is causing an issue.
Honestly, I can't see even where I am.
And councillor Nicksey, you wanted to add to this.
You know, there are two things, I was, like councillor Orban, I want to know the reason why they were asking to remove it. Um, no reason at all.
Remove to ground level.
Doesn't say why, does it? I think the other thing that you have to consider is, when, you know, especially being in a coastal district, we've got to be looking
What tree?
One person talking at a time, please.
Councillor Orban.
Yeah.
Sorry.
Sorry, everybody, it was one person. There's a lot of people talking at the same time and councillor Nicksey speaking.
Right, so so there's two things. Like councillor Orban, I want to know the reason why it's being felled, because I think that is obviously important. And I do think that we need to consider, um, uh native trees, I'm not saying we we cut trees down with any native, don't get me wrong here. But we also do have to consider about, you know, the right tree in the right place and so on and so forth. But if we, if we were allowing people to maintain their trees properly, so that it isn't, even if it isn't a native tree, but it could be, um manipulated, put away, controlled, because hollies you can, so I know that. Um then I think we're looking for that way, but without the reason, um, you know, we can't do anything, but I I you know, in all of these, I do think we're also looking at the species of the tree and not just the fact that it's a tree, because that actually is important to the diversity and and the wildlife, um, that we attract in this area. Certain trees that we put in, it doesn't help the wildlife even if it's a tree. We have to bear that in mind.
It's an oak, didn't it?
Description, uh, description of proposed work, so does it not go down?
Reason for the work.
I was just saying, well, it's just explaining what you need to do.
Which they haven't done.
So, so there isn't, there isn't anything.
Okay, so what do people propose?
More information.
Yeah, okay. Yeah, so who'd like to propose that?
I'm happy to.
Thank you, Amory.
I'll second that.
Okay. Um and can we take a vote on that, please? All right, thank you. Do I?
Okay, thank you. Application four is one three six Southwood Row, change of use of a C three dwelling house to a C four house in Baltimore. Called in by councillor Nicksey. It's being turned into a H M O and councillor Nicksey has had residents contact her over this. Thank you, members.
So, um, anybody who knows Southwood Row, it's very sort of like cheap by jow housing, um, it's very tight round there, there's lots of roads that sort of like come off it, you know, parking lots and so on and so forth, not that we're talking about parking this time. Anyway, this particular house is run by porch light. Um, which obviously is important, we we all know that, but this particular house is also a huge problem in the local area for all residents. It's so, it's a, it's a four story house, I want to say, um four, three story.
Oh, it looks like three.
Four story, I can't remember, it's four or three.
Yeah.
Three, three story house. And it's got, um a family in there at the moment, so the tenants in there at the moment are using the whole house as a family. And the problem is just that manageable. It doesn't matter who's been in there, unfortunately, there has been a constant repetition of um drug-related incidents, crime, police, so on and so forth. So in the neighbourhood, this is a known house as a huge problem. So the, and and so the the community are an excellent community. They have tried to help the tenants in this property all the way through. And they have, um, they 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 came to, again, together with me as a group, explained the things that they've done for the tenants over a period of time to try and get them back in strength now and all sorts of things. So, I mean, you know, there's a lot of consideration gone into this. But what they've never done, and they realise to their areas, they never sort of like documented it or logged it or anything, and they feel that that, you know, this is a disadvantage. So porch might want to turn this into a H M O where every single floor is going to be used by a different tenant. The walls are paper thin, the the neighbours on either side, needless to say, are absolutely panicking about this. But the community as a whole just think more about escalating the problem and they they don't know what to do to reach out to say, but, you know, we've been trying to help these people, but we feel like we've almost been penalised by it being turned into H M O. It's a very big issue amongst a very large group of people. And we all know that H M Os, you know, you can have, you know, one in so many and blah, blah, blah. know that HMOs, you know, you can have, you know, one in so many and blah, 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 and we need, and we understand the need for porch light, but I would recommend, um, to council that this particular property isn't the best idea in terms of turning it into HMO.
Thank you councillor Nixie, that's very articulate, councillor Makerson.
I'm, I'm just wondering what the ideal situation for the neighbourhood is for this house, is it a family house?
Apparently it's a.
Single dwelling.
It's, currently it's a single dwelling.
I think we don't, that, that's not good, because of the type of people that are doing that.
Well, it's not good at the moment, but it would only get worse if it was like more often, so because it's, because it's a, a, a single house, you've had things from couples or families or, or various things, and the community has gone out to help these people in terms of, you know, clothing, food, all sorts of stuff, um, but there is, uh, it is also known as, as a, a drop off house, there's a lot going on there, late at night, early in the morning, all through the day, et cetera, et cetera, where that is the house that people go to, so depending on which tenant's there, or when they are, sometimes they're like on AWOL and just not being around, you get drug people like knocking on everybody else's houses, not knowing where to go and stuff, it's just created a, a, a cult problem for the community.
Is the ideal thing?
Well, it doesn't really matter, we're looking at, but in some ways, that's not really why we're here, though, is it, Steve Orban always says, we're looking at what's on the paper, what is being proposed is what we're deciding on, and what I'm saying is what's being proposed, I don't think is a good idea, as to what it could be in the future, that's not what we're here for tonight.
Councillor Green, you wanted to speak, and then?
I'd just like to endorse what councillor said, um, I think currently, if it's turned by porch light, it is potentially a house of multiple occupation, three, big three units, they might turn it into a four unit with the occupation, which is live in the planning process, um, I think that's too much for the size of the location of the property, so we should probably, certainly, go with that, um, I don't think, it's unfortunate, but I don't think we can propose it being used as a multiple occupation, three units, because I don't think there are any regulations or something doing that.
Thank you councillor Green, councillor Huxley, then councillor Orban, then councillor Wing, right, okay. Yeah.
Obviously, that is, I mean, have you gone to porch light and told them the problems there? Uh, I think, yes, but porch light are very aware of the problems, they're dealing with the community all the time, and so, again, one of the problems the community have is like who contacts in porch light change, you know, and so on and so forth, and although the porch light keeps saying, oh, this will help, we will sort it out, so nothing ever really gets done, you know, don't get me wrong, porch light are up against it, I'm not, I'm not criticising them, but, but it doesn't matter whether they contact them or not, they still are left with a problem in the street.
Thank you. Councillor Orban and councillor Wing?
Yeah, thank you Chair, um, I'll take, is there, is it, fucking arse Dean, is it four units? It's four, it's four units, and as a house in multiple occupation, that's not, that's not very bad in, in the, in the terms of that, um, TDC, we have one for twenty odd.
Seventeen, another one.
Seventeen, which we refuse, anyway, um, so what the planners are going to look at is, are the sizes of the units in, in conjunction with the size, uh, the, the, the sizes that they comply with within it, um, are the facilities okay for it to be used as a house in mul- multiple occupation, is there any other, uh, houses in multiple occupation with, within a hundred metres? And if there aren't, the likelihood is that they, this, this will get, this will get approved, and, and, and you, you can't deal with the problems that are there now, you've got to look, in planning terms, you've got to look at the use of the property, and, um, and it's how it's managed, so, um, but you can't put in a planning application a condition that says it's got to be managed in a certain way, you can't do that, um, so it, it is very, very difficult, but I would say that if the ward councillors are really concerned about this and the residents are really concerned about this, then, then I am mindful to go along with the, the ward councillors, but I'm just advising and just giving you the, the straight facts of it, trying to get the emotion of the residents out of it, we've got to look at it purely in planning terms.
Thank you councillor Orban, what you were saying.
I, I mean, we have a situation in Amherst where you've got four of these similar types placing, and it's a horse issue, but I, I, I need to look at planning reasons for rejecting this, and I think you could, you know, they've got three, I think one in that fourth one is about, is about, uh, I use the word greed actually, uh, creating another room to generate a bigger income from that, from that building, I think that's the motivation behind the developer, so I would, I would suggest that, that we try and go down the route of overdevelopment, you know, it's fine as it is, and impact on neighbours, because an additional unit will create a lot more comings and goings and noise, and keep it as it is.
That's a proposal.
And in that road, yes, okay, so what is the proposal?
That is.
Proposal, okay, yeah, it's a proposal.
It'll take me five years to get one.
Overdeveloped, yes.
I do think we've got a back and back HMOs.
Okay, yeah, councillor Wing, that was your proposal. Who would second that? Yes, councillor Nixie, okay. And can we vote on that, please? Are we in accordance with that? Thank you.
Same.
Oh, thank you, Helen. I thought we were abstaining. Right, I mean, this one to look at is, um, BV Bond Engineering Supplies Bristol Place. Uh, shush, islands, yeah, it's all right, it's okay, um, is that outline application that you've looked at before, first of February and the seventh of December, first of February, uh, no comments, uh, seventh of December, Ramsgate Town Council supports in principle the use of the land, but considers there to be too many units within the outline application, not enough parking provision, access into a busy highway is a concern, the area is densely populated and to avoid disturbance, any light industrial use should be, should have usage time restrictions in place, now what they're planning is eight commercial stroke industrial units, after demolishing the, those that are there, okay. Okay, um, thank you, councillor Orban, you wanted to speak.
Yeah, I think we go with what we did last time, Chair, I think it is, uh, over, overdevelopment, I think it'd be too much to get out onto the, onto the high street there in relation to the, the amount of units that they, that they want, uh, and I just think it's too much for that, for that area, so.
Apologies, members, I didn't tell you councillor Austin called this in, reason overdevelopment, a conservation area, highway safety concerns, thank you.
Councillor Austin, sorry, did you want to say?
Old space.
Yeah.
Lots of units.
Yeah.
And it's not so much the units traffic, it's, it's road, councillor, just highlighting the things people go up that, that, et cetera, et cetera, there are many turnings coming onto that road, and we are going to have vehicles going backwards and forwards all the time, um, into that area, residents are very concerned about it, there are a lot of road safety issues in the area, as we've just heard in previous discussions, and it's, uh, there are also some matters around the ownership of land that actually some of this proposal does not appear to be on the applicant's land, but on a neighbour's land, which is going through.
Thank you.
So those are my concerns.
Thank you councillor, then councillor Nixie, then councillor, then councillor Wing.
Sorry, this is leaving, I must have just lost, this is a, I mean, one that we voted on before, and we had time, I didn't.
Exactly.
So what was changed, I've, I've just missed what was new.
Changes to parking.
They reduced the number of units by one between December and February.
Yeah.
They had it from that, and now they've changed the parking spaces, like, it's still only basically.
Of course.
Parking space, where the.
Yeah, yes, and I agree, on previous kind of supplies still, don't they?
Thank you.
Sorry, sorry, just haven't hear.
Councillor Makerson, then councillor Wing?
I just agree with people, I think the rate of huge adds to the lobby.
That comes out into the high street, um, these will be little or smaller, um, I had a long conversation, as much as I could, with the dentist who's on the, is one of the neighbours, he's fully supportive, the, the ones that aren't supportive are, um, I think they're wrong. This is a lot of them, yes.
This is a lot sort of thing to have in a town or a city, these little industrial bits, when I spoke to somebody else who lives just across the road, he said, yeah, that'd be good, maybe there'll be jobs there, I mean, so the, don't just go with what a few very vocal people who live across the road in paradise say, a, a, another person who lives in paradise, uh, said she doesn't notice any of it anyway, it would be other ones they've got there, they're other in light industrial places, they're restricted in what they can do by the planning use class, they're restricted in the noise they can produce, um, it's not just a residential area, it's a very mixed use area.
Well, thank you for your opinion, Pat, councillor Wing, then councillor Austin, then councillor Nixie.
I disagree, I, I mean, I go to the parts of the state to get my paint and my electrical stuff, and it's a nightmare, and you have got quite a lot of park, spaces to park there, but you can't get in, you go around the corner on Cannon Road or drop my car off to Spain's, now that's just one company with the MOT place, the two companies on, I, I would imagine a bit of land that might be a similar size, and they have, you know, regularly nine or ten cars there, you know, all it takes is, is, is for each of those units to have associated business that's car related or vehicle related, and we have got a real issue in that very tiny space, I do think they should be congratulated on, and taken out on wildlife, but actually putting a bird box, box up and having an ecological enhancement, Platter Den with the Bum Hotel.
Okay, thank you councillor Wing, councillor Austin, then councillor Nixie.
I just wanted to, I, I mean, obviously we talk for a lot of residents, the majority of residents are concerned about it, the main concerns are about road safety, it's not about having a small industrial site in a residential area, that's not the problem, the problem is the number of units and the access to the site from what is an extremely busy main road, as we've just heard earlier.
Yeah, thank you.
Thank you councillor Austin, councillor Nixie?
Again, I just want to read this out, councillor Nixie, and it says, and I don't know who's talking about anything, as a council, it says, Ramsgate Town Council supports in principle the use of this land, of course we do, nobody says that we don't, but considers there to be too many units within the outline application, that's not what we're looking at, it's not like we do have a, it's good news and there should be these things and people have them in town, we're purely talking about the amount, that's it.
The access.
The access.
Yeah.
Any difference? David, you've got, yeah.
It's safe to be, they've reduced the number of units, which what we asked them to do, um, they've increased the amount of parking, which is what we asked them to do, um, but still the access onto the busy highway, which we should continue to have a concern about, um, but that's all, David.
Okay, councillor Austin?
I think reducing the number of units by one is obviously a suggestion by the developer. Still, it's a very, very overcrowded site, it's seven years, and all that, and the parking, yes, but they've only made a tiny change to parking, it's still going to be a nightmare getting in and out of it.
Councillor Crittenden, thank you.
Uh, just looking here, it says the amendment is changes to parking space and building size and scale, um, I'm just wondering, do we have the old building size and scale?
There was a.
Can we, can we see?
The original, the original proposal was.
Yeah, the original.
We wrote that in, yes, which they've changed, but, so we. They text that in September.
It's in light.
Well, what is? Sorry, with all this noise, I can't, is anybody else want to speak? What is the proposal for this?
Mefis, if you're still concerned, as you were in December, then you could propose to repeat that comment.
Councillor Austin, you want?
I propose that we repeat the comment for our December.
I would second that.
Thank you councillor Wing, um, can we vote on that, please? All right, okay, I think that's passed. David and Bryn and Pat.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And your final application is, uh, number six, which is one seven three Kim Street, change of use from office, use class E to one three bed dwelling, including the demolition of single story rear addition and chimney, erection of part three story and single story rear extension and alterations to fenestration in the conservation area, called in by councillor Crittenden, conversion of ground floor retail unit to residential is your reason. Thank you, sorry, I, I said retail unit, but it is an office, but the, the principle I was concerned about, um, still stands, and I'm not so much against it or for it, I, I brought it to, um, this committee because I'd actually liked to hear other people's opinion on this, um, if you look at the, um, design, um, and access statement, uh, where they've got photographs of the, of that end of, um, King Street, um, whilst a huge amount of the centre of King Street, from about Iceland up, has been turned, a lot of it's been turned into residential, there is a little cluster of shots left at the corner where the fish and chip shop is on the corner, and you've got the, um, I can't read it on here, uh, the miniatures or something on the other corner, there's a couple of, um, very battered, uh, shops front, next, oh, dears, thank you, next to this property, and then there's a tattoo parlor and a cafe, and I just want to, to hear what other people had to say really, rather than me actually trying to, anything as a particular thought forward on it.
Thank you, Helen, David, you had something to say?
Isn't one seven three King Street far enough along King Street to allow it to go to residential, and isn't that what the local plan says?
Yes, it may be.
Cluster of shops.
But it's, my point is that there is still this cluster of shops, um, some, at least a couple of which are very new, and another two are relatively new, um, I, I'm just looking for an opinion.
Councillor Orban, sorry.
They don't actually go to residential, it's what it means, it doesn't mean they all go at once.
Councillor Orban?
Chair, yeah, um, I think in principle, I don't think it's a problem at all, um, as, as in a lot of areas, you find that shops get converted into dwellings, and then because they're all dwellings, then people come along, they want to change the bottom half into a shop because they can make stuff, so it, it, it is this, it is this cer- circular thing, as far as I'm concerned, providing that the rear story extension does not impact on anybody else, um, I'm in favour of, uh, of supporting this, Chair.
Can we have a look at the rear story extensions, are there a way?